I'm ready, sir. All righty, I'd like to call the Macomb City Council Committee to hold the order, please, if the clerk would call the roll.
Mike Wayland.
Here.
John Vajese.
Here.
Annette Carper.
Here.
Tom Cook.
Present.
Gail Carper.
Here.
Tammy Lee Brown Edwards.
Here.
Dennis Moon.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you, we have a quorum. I'd like to ask Mr. Joe Glaze of the Capital Power to please join me down here at the podium. And we'd like to issue a proclamation this evening. Joe, thanks for joining us. It says, "Whereas Illinois ranked sixth in the nation for installed wind capacity and became the sixth state to exceed 5,000 megawatts of operating wind in 2019. And whereas Illinois is home to 34 active wind energy manufacturing facilities and almost 14,000 total jobs supported by wind and solar, cementing our ranking as third in the nation in wind industry employment. And whereas wind powers opportunity in cities and communities all across Illinois, generating $49 million in annual state and local payments and $37 million in annual lease payments to Illinois farmers. And whereas wind farms in Illinois have attracted nearly $11.4 billion in investment to date, helping to spur critical investments in communities that fund manufacturing jobs, education opportunities, and local economic development projects. And whereas the advancements in wind power will greatly enhance our ability to attract new business and talent to our state and community, and will continue to grow as a major force in the U.S. economy. Now, therefore, I, Michael J. Emmon, Mayor of the city of Macomb, hereby proclaim the week of August 9th through the 15th as American Wind Week in Macomb, and I encourage all citizens to learn more about the benefits of wind energy in our community and to celebrate Illinois's leadership in renewable energy production." Mr. Glaze, as representative from Capital Power, you've made a significant investment in wind energy in McDonough and adjoining Warren County, and we're going to present this to you tonight and give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about what you've got accomplished. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, please, cheers, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Emmon, council and guests. On behalf of Capital Power, thank you for inviting me to be here this evening to celebrate the city of Macomb's proclamation of Wind Week in Macomb. As we both, as we mark both Wind Power Week locally and American Wind Week nationally, I'm proud to be a part of this industry that values community and collaboration. These events celebrate wind energy and its roles in supporting the economic and sustainability developments of communities across the country with clean, reliable, and affordable electricity. Cardinal Point is one of Capital Power's five wind sites across the U.S. Capital Power is committed to delivering responsible energy for tomorrow, and wind makes a key part in our business. Capital Power is also supporting the local community by contributing tax revenue to McDonough and Warren Counties and providing lease and revenue payments to landowners, a lot of which gets spent here at your local businesses. We're also pleased to support many local incentives such as festivals, celebrations, and organizations, a few of which are based here in Macomb, such as the Guinness Garden, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Crime Stoppers, and the Out of Darkness Walk. Most recently, Capital Power and our employees have responded to the COVID-19 crisis by contributing to important local communities, charities, including the McDonough County United Way, which is helping support food pantries, emergency social services, and housing assistance. Capital Power appreciates all of the support from the local community throughout the development and construction of the Cardinal Point Wind Farm, especially the Macomb Area Economic Development Corporation, and we look forward to many more years of being part of your community. On behalf of Capital Power, we are grateful to accept the city of Macomb's Wind Power Week proclamation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Glaze, I appreciate it. And, Mr. Glaze, you are welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go if you need to. And you're getting your mask, you're right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All righty, does anyone wish to speak to the council under the public comment sections of tonight's agenda? Ms. McMeacon.
My name is Heather McMeacon, and I'm actually reading this letter on behalf of Mimi Carr, who penned it for the Racial Justice Coalition, and could not be in attendance this evening. It's, I should point out, and normally we do not do this, as white allies, but she gave us permission to point out that she is a black woman who grew up here and penned this letter from her perspective, and our Racial Justice Coalition adopted it as an official letter. "It is quite sad to see that in 2020, some people still think there are two sides to racism, even city leaders, no less. What message does it send to our black community when threats to their existence are reduced by white city leaders to simple opinion? Let's get one thing straight: If you are truly here for marginalized community members, you must first accept the fact that racism is not a valid opinion, and it should never be described as such. A valid opinion is, 'I think strawberry is the best flavor of ice cream.' A valid opinion is not, 'I think this group of people should be harmed or murdered because they are fighting for their human and civil rights.' The fact that some of our own city council members express sentiments indicating they think this way is very telling and extremely unacceptable. It certainly doesn't set the right tone for a city that claims to be for equality and diversity. So which is it? Why do our white city council members claim to be here for the black community and then turn around and refuse to immediately strongly condemn all threats and expressions of bigotry and intolerance here just because technically no criminal laws have been broken? Yet, the vast body of scientific research clearly demonstrates that our system of justice is filled with systemic racism, which targets and negatively affects black people and other people of color. The system that repeatedly and pervasively fails to protect them with the same level of concern and competence as for white community members receive is evident even in how this council responded to the story about the threats. Had those threats been made against the farmer's market, would this body have ignored them for weeks as free speech? The hostility toward protesters and public is also clearly disorderly conduct. So why can a black or brown person be flagged down for disorderly conduct for playing music loudly in our community? But an angry white person screaming racial slurs, blocking traffic, and getting in people's faces unmasked is not considered disorderly conduct. I want to ask the white city council members, what is so hard to grasp about the validity and urgency of this violent racism? Who is going to get hurt or killed before you all take this issue seriously? If you open a history book or even look at the past month's news, you will find numerous examples of what happens when threats against civil rights movements go unchecked. By the time the speech turns into behavior, it's too late. People are harmed, people are killed, innocent people. Hate speech is a clear warning sign, it always has been. If this is something city council members are so willing to ignore, why have they taken a public position that requires you to look out for everyone? When white elected officials dismiss racist language actions and threats to opinions or disagreements, they show us they simply refuse to remove their privileged lenses for the sake of the safety, health, and quality of life for those in our community who are oppressed. White Macomb City Council members, we need you as leaders to acknowledge that you cannot begin to lead on racial justice issues through your white and class-privileged lenses. Your lives have never been threatened or trivialized solely based on your skin color. You have never had to fight for your right to exist solely based on your skin color. It is time to set aside your views. You are being asked to look at the undeniable historical patterns of what is currently happening and listen to the ones who are directly affected by this racism. Publicly denounce racism acts of bigotry and intolerance, threats and hate speech in a mayoral proclamation, which the black community members have been asking and waiting for since last spring. Listen to us instead of silencing us if you truly want to create a community that values everyone equally regardless of race. Your silence, your ignorance, and your denial are taken by us as complicity. And it's signed, Mimi Carr, co-chair, Regina Matthews, co-chair, the Racial Justice Coalition." And I'll just add a quick sentence comment.
Ms. McMeacon, you're out on time.
But last week, when I was told that I was not welcome to come address here unless I had evidence, I need to correct the record. The losses all people may come and address this body.
You can do that when we have this on the agenda. Ms. McMeacon, you can do that under the agented item here, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak under the public comment section of tonight's agenda? All righty, hearing none, we'll move on to discussion on community equity issues under the first item, police response to citizens, recent citizens' concerns. Alderman Carper, you had this placed on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, and I wanted to explain what I meant by this term, community equity issues. The term equity basically means, in very short definition, that the dictates of conscience should apply to the settlement of controversies that can't be resolved by existing policies. It's a very old concept. We used to have a whole series of courts that dealt with nothing but equitable issues, was recognized as far back as Aristotle and Plato. The same ideas formed the basis for the 13 original colonies revolting against English rule. All you have to do is look at the Declaration of Independence and the Bill of Rights. It was used greatly in the 60s and 70s when the country was focused on issues of racial injustice and civil rights, and these concerns continue today. Additionally, community equity principles have been applied to make policy changes in a variety of areas, and I just want to take a minute to list those. Sexual and gender identity, economic status, physical and mental disability, political participation and influence, voting, health services, food insecurity, education, homelessness, and wealth disparity. I'm not proposing this as a substitute for public comments, nor as an addition to public comments. I see it as a category for information that we feel as city council members needs to be made public but may not fit into the regular agenda of the city council. And the examples of this include the report we heard last week about the police officer's investigation of the social media comments made against the Black Lives Matter protest, and also this week's discussion of how public comments can be made to the city council meetings, and information on the protection of protesters. So what I'm asking all of my fellow city council members for is some input on whether this agenda item might be something that we want to regularly place on the city council agenda. I don't know if it would be quarterly, monthly, whatever, but I would ask that I get your input on whether that would be something that we would want to use so we can bring forward issues that may be so new, we don't have any ways of dealing with them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion on Alderman Carper's comments there? If not, we have a presentation by the police department, and we can come back to that if you'd like. Alderman Carper.
Well, of course, I stand in full support for this item to be placed on the agenda. I have voiced before that I would like social justice to be on the agenda on a regular basis. I appreciate how Alderman Gail Carper has expanded it to include everything and not just those in regard to race equality, but equality for everyone. So it's a very active time in our world and in our community, and I think we need to be talking about it on a regular basis. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for now? Alderman Vajese.
I would also concur with what both Alderwomen have said. It is a very strange time right now, and there's a lot of upheaval, the best way to say it. So anything we can do to help out the citizens, to give them a voice, to be able to speak and make things heard, I think is a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Chief Barker, I believe you have some information to share.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. You go ahead and bring up the presentation, please. I was asked to come in and talk about the equity issues, focusing solely on the protests and some of the other stuff that we've seen in social media. And the reason why we wanted to talk about that, a lot of the complaints that we were receiving or we were hearing in the community was complaints that were made on social media or in the newspaper that were not coming to the police department. So the first one, when we decided that we were going to start, you know, taking the initiative and looking into these ourselves, was Ms. McMeacon made a complaint about a vehicle almost striking her. We looked into that, we had an officer contact her. She thought it was a truck that ran the red light and almost struck her. We do have video at that intersection, and we were able to pull that video up. The vehicle did run the red light, however, it was not a truck, it was either an SUV or a minivan. And if you go ahead and next slide and play that. If you look there at the top, this is the vehicle, it turns off a Randolph Street onto the bypass, and if you look there to the left of the screen, eventually you'll see Ms. McMeacon's black vehicle there pulling up to the intersection. That was the near hit there that was described on social media. The second complaint, if you go to the next slide, that we received was reference a red vehicle. On the complaint, they were able to get the license plate, which allowed us to identify the driver. We talked to the driver of the vehicle. He told us that he did drive by twice because he was taking his girlfriend, dropping her off at work, then on his way back, he was stopped at the light. While he was stopped at the light, he said someone yelled at him, which made him upset, so then he started yelling at the protesters, and he says he yelled "White Lives Matter" and yelled "Your movement's phony." And that's a picture of him there using his middle finger. While talking to Ms. McMeacon, she mentioned that there was a counter protester also there that was not wearing his mask. He had a board made up of his own, which stated "White Lives, Police Lives Matter." According to McMeacon, the subject refused to wear his mask or maintain social distancing. And this is a picture of that individual. The next incident occurred on July 29th. McMeacon did a good job, she called us with the complaint, dialed 911. According to her, there was a white truck yelling profanities, drove by the protesters two or three times, blocked traffic, swerved at protesters. The license plate given did not come back to the vehicle matching that description. However, we do have video, so we were able to see one vehicle matching that description at that timeframe come through the intersection, and you can see that here at the bottom there, the white truck drives by, it looks like somebody may have, we don't know, but he slows down and then starts yelling, I assume, and then drives off. Next slide. The next incident was an elderly man that approached the protesters without a mask. When it became confrontational, McMeacon dialed 911 immediately, which allowed us to respond and assist. When we talked to the individual, he said that he just wanted to talk to the protesters, that they started yelling at him with a bullhorn. He was cooperative with the officer, walked away from the area of the protesters, talked to him for a while, then he walked back to his vehicle, sat in his vehicle for exactly three minutes, and then he drove away. And McMeacon did thank us for responding on that incident. And if you look there, you can see the officer talking with the gentleman, and then on the left side, there is the video of him, top, getting in the vehicle at 5:11, 5:14, the vehicle leaving the park. Okay, next slide. So looking at all of these issues, we have several recommendations or things that we'd like to mention. MPD officers are going to continue to monitor everything that's going on in Chandler Park or any protest anywhere. We are citing defined times where officers will, the ones that we are aware of and know that we will be doing extra patrol, that will be documented heavily. Anytime a protester has any kind of concern, feels threatened in any way, we would like for them to call 911 immediately so that we can respond. It's better if we know at the particular time, because then we're able to, you know, investigate immediately, not two or three days later or a week later. It puts us behind the curve. One recommendation that we do have here is, it's not required, but the city has a special events permit. And if you fill out that special events permit, telling us when you're going to be there and if there are any resources, then we can help get you those if need be. Plus, I can ensure that I have the proper manpower to go by and make sure that everything's going okay with that particular protest. Next slide. So looking at some of the other equity issues and some of the other things that we noticed in social media, we are not allowed to comment on pending court cases. We can't do that because if we do, we take the chance of tainting the jury pool, and we don't want to do that. Okay? Macomb Police Department handled over 17,000 calls for service in 2019. Over 17,000 calls for service in 2019 and only 13 use-of-force incidents. Okay, let that sink in a minute. That tells me that my officers are doing a fantastic job of de-escalating situations that only have 13 use-of-force incidents. And the last line there, zero taser deployments in 2019 and 20. Macomb Police Department, zero taser deployments in 2019 and 2020. Okay? All use-of-force incidents are reviewed by the supervisor, and once the supervisor reviews it, the form then goes to the deputy chief, deputy chief pulls the case, looks at everything, he signs off on it, and then it comes to me, and I look at it. Okay? Next slide. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Alderman Carper.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that the 13 use-of-force incidents are reviewed by a number of people in the department. Do you keep paperwork on those use-of-force incidents?
We do. Each one has a use-of-force form that goes along with that process of signing off and documenting that incident, and then annually, we put that in our yearly report that we provide to the council.
And just to be clear, when you use the term of use-of-force, what are the ranges of that use-of-force? What is the action that is the least use-of-force to the most use-of-force?
It would be active hand, so controlling an individual. If we had to physically force somebody, strike somebody, hit them with a baton, use pepper spray, pointer firearm, or pointer taser at somebody, those are still counted. Even just pointing a firearm or a taser at anyone is still considered use-of-force, and that's tracked also.
Okay, and you made mention of the, that you're going and reviewing the security of the marches and the protests. You're not waiting for a 911 call, are you?
No, no, no.
Are you taking any kind of action for their security without getting a specific complaint from them?
Yes, and that's the reason why we started doing the calls, once we started seeing the complaints, but we're not out there monitoring everybody's Facebook page. That's why it's so important to call us.
In terms of during the protest and the march, what are you doing then to preserve the security of the marchers and the protesters?
Right now, we are giving supervisors, starting this Wednesday, will make contact for the known group that we know is coming on Wednesday. They're on a regular basis. Supervisor may contact with them, let them know if they need anything to dial 911, call us, and then officers will be scheduled to go by certain periods of times to keep an eye on them.
And will you also keep track of the times that you go, that your officers go by so we can hear about it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, when we do an extra patrol, whether it's, you know, someone calls in, asks for an extra patrol for their house, every time an officer goes by and does that, they log that with their computer, and then that is logged into that incident.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Carper.
Yes, during this past week, as I have been thinking about the concerns that were brought to us last week in regard to safety, it's ironic to me, I think, that there at Chandler Park, where we recently put gates in for the safety of our children, that we have our community members standing along a very, very busy street. And I have stood, and I have stood up on that street, and I have held signs, and the trucks come by quickly, and the semis turn quickly and hard and fast. I have stood with your police officers, and collectively, we've gone, "Phew, that was close." It's a little nerve-wracking to be on that corner, and I understand why you choose that corner, because you want to be seen. I get that. But could there not be a safer place that we could stand to protest? And I understand, I'm not taking away the safety of the protesters, because people are going to go, if they want to, they're going to. But I just wonder, if there isn't a safer place that we could find than that very, very busy corner?
Yeah, that's, I would much, I would prefer that everyone went inside of Chandler Park. That would be the safest place to be, because we have had semis overturn at that intersection. Within the last 10 years, we had a semi overturn with all the hogs, if anybody should remember that. That would be terrible if that happened, while people were standing on that corner. Plus, while you're standing on that corner, and, you know, we have individuals with a bullhorn, and we have people yelling, screaming, waving signs, well then, obviously, we're starting to see what the cause and effect of that is when individuals are running red lights. Okay? Because they're running the red lights because they're not looking at the traffic signal, they're looking at the protesters.
I would agree, because I always see the protesters, I always look to the direction where the protesters are. I just wonder if that's something that we should consider, or should be considered. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else on the council? Thank you, Doc. Okay, Ms. McMeacon. I'm sorry, Celeste, I can't see you back there. I apologize. Go ahead, Celeste, I apologize. Yeah, please, if you'd come up, that'd be great. Thank you, and you're welcome to take your mask off if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Barker, for ensuring our safety and by doing that, but you could also review your tapes from when we first started doing the protest. We had vehicles with MPD still there doing things. We had one guy that sped off really fast, and a police car followed him for a little bit with lights on, and then nothing. Like, he didn't get pulled over, it kind of stopped after for a little bit. The female officer with the brown hair, and I'm really bad with names, so I apologize, I don't know her name, but she was in an SUV, and she watched as people came and did things excessively with the smog, and she just kept going. There were many a times that the founders of the Macomb Black Lives Movement were like, "Why aren't they doing anything? They can see this." Whether they were sitting at the train station, watching, or driving by patrolling, and it didn't make any sense, because you can actively see what we see, and what we've been telling you is happening, and no action was taken. Also, we make sure to have everyone step back, we constantly make sure to remind everyone of the safety of the traffic, and finding a safe place is like saying, "Hey, you want to speak for your rights, but you should be hidden off somewhere. We're there on that corner because it's a busy intersection. People coming from in and out of town can see us, and we aren't trying to disrupt traffic, but we are trying to speak our word, and having us move somewhere else is going to derail from that movement." I understand the concern, but I don't know where else except for the center of town to be, and our local businesses are trying to thrive by having outside eating and things like that. We don't want to overcrowd the inside of the square and put further hurt on those local businesses that we cherish so much. So please do keep that in mind when you're considering a safer option. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Celeste. Does anyone have any questions for Celeste? Chief, anything can we reassure her about our efforts there?
I do remember the one incident you were talking about, because I was there on that one. The officer did get him stopped, he just went up around the corner. That was our K-9 officer, he did stop that vehicle, because that vehicle did, it hammered it when it went through the intersection, and he just happened to be right there and did a good job of making contact there. I don't remember what the results were from it, but he did make contact. And that's why it is so important to call us when things are happening, and if we do have violations, we will address those violations. And we will do investigations. We do have the tools and the resources to do those. If we have someone calling us and is a complainant and would like us to pursue those, we'll pursue every complaint that we receive.
Chief, would there be an expectation that you'd be giving guidance to officers that are static to take enforcement action when they see it?
Oh, yes, yeah, definitely.
Right. Anything else on that topic, Celeste? Ms. Townsend, I'm sorry. On that for now? Okay, thank you. Alderman Carper.
Just a comment, we're not moving protests. That's there, but we also want to make sure that they're safe. But I've been out there myself on a variety of issues, and they're not going anywhere.
Thank you, anyone else? Oh, excuse me, Ms. McMeacon.
Okay, as to the calls that I did make, I was not the organizer for those protests, I was just an attendee. And so I got there late, and so I went by what they reported to me on those vehicles, and when we felt that those people were escalating, that's why I went ahead and made the call, because I'm comfortable doing that. That red truck, I promise you, Kaylee's here, he said- I promise you, Kaylee's here, he said way worse and did way worse. And he didn't just go by twice, he went by at least three times and he escalated every time. He was there, Mr. White Power. He was there to provoke our people. And our people, you know, resisted that. You mentioned zero TASER deployments. So how many people have been held or restrained while the jail went ahead and did your TASER deployments for your department in the jail? So it was the corrections officers using the TASERS, which wouldn't be on your TASER deployment list. Do you have that stat anywhere?
I have a list of how many TASER deployments.
Okay. Okay. I would like to recommend that if Macomb PD is the arresting officer and they take people to the jail and they are subsequently tased to get out of that vehicle, and it's a Macomb Police Department vehicle, it'd be good to have that notated in reports. That would be helpful for record keeping. Also for, you made a comment that I need to talk about because you talked about that people are distracted and driving because of the protests and that's why they're running the red light. That gentleman was running the red light because he was being a jerk who wanted attention. He wasn't running the red light because those people have magical power over him to make him disobey traffic laws. It's really important how we talk about this stuff. The people who are making those choices to drive unsafely, that is on them, regardless of what's happening in the park, regardless of what's happening elsewhere around them. We as drivers, as adults, have responsibility for how we do things. Now, my people, I didn't turn around to watch them, but our watchers said that that one gentleman who kept getting in our face, he was not a counter protester, to be clear. We've had counter protesters. They stand across the street, they know how to do protests, they hold their signs, they're respectful, they don't want to escalate violence. This guy came to get in our faces, disrupt our freedom of speech, disrupt our protests, force us all to stop what we were doing to center him and what he wanted out of that evening. And he would not. For over 15 minutes, we tried repeatedly to ask him to please step out of our space, please stop interrupting us, please stop being a distraction, please stop putting our people at risk, please wear a mask. Okay, now we have to call the police. If you keep escalating, getting towards us, okay, now we're going to chant. And then we would chant. But we didn't start chanting until he repeatedly, and we have several witnesses to that in this room, repeatedly refused to act with safety towards the people there. And that is why we started chanting peace to back him off. And I guess the last thing I will say is, you know, that's great that, that we are wanting to have safety. I would just state that we need more, we need a proclamation. But there is an event in Chandler Park this Saturday, and we would like to invite all of you to attend. And it is a quiet event. Nobody will challenge you. Every person who comes in there is free to walk through unencumbered. You may read the posters that our black community members have written. You can reject anything that you see there. Nobody's going to discuss it with you. It is a peaceful event. But we invite you to see some of the things that our black children have written, some of the things that our black community members, our black students, past and present, have written about their lived experiences here. And that's one thing, as, as white people, we need to accept that a lot of us can do really hurtful things without realizing it because of the way we were raised in a white supremacist culture. Deeply hurtful, but with the best of intentions and not even know it. And I have done every one of those things. So when I say white people are racist, I'm talking about myself. I'm talking about a lifetime of mistakes and microaggressions and silencing and invalidating and stealing voice from. And I challenge everybody else, if you truly care about this community, it's really important that we as white people begin to talk to each other about that. And I will also state that when I come here and speak for the Racial Justice Coalition, it's because their two chairs can't be here. They don't have the privilege to be here. But I am speaking for a group of people, including diverse people, diverse voices. And when white people always are trying to make it about me or my personality or claiming I'm doing it on my own, what do you think that says to our black members? What do you think you're saying to our organization?
Ms. McMeacon, you mentioned an event this Saturday. You didn't tell us what time.
So it starts at 8:00 AM to 2:00. There was a speak out at noon. It's just going to be a gentle, like our, like our events in the park have been. We will have lots of displays.
All right. Thank you for that. Anyone else regarding the police response to recent citizens' concerns? All righty. Next item up is discussion on reinstating public comments at cityofmacomb.com. Alderman Carper, you also asked us to put this on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The reason I asked is that it seemed like it, to me, from what I saw, that it was going quite well. That we were, we had adapted to COVID preventing in-person meetings. We had made sure that we were complying with the Open Meetings Act and the emergency changes to that. And that, you know, we could get public comments that way and we, we could still have that, that public input. But I was really dismayed to learn that, that, that email has now been shut down. And once again, I would ask my colleagues on the city council to give some input on whether they feel that that would be a thing that we would like to continue. I would like to see that email continue. If it's too much for, for one of our clerks to read, and I know sometimes if we get 12 comments, that would be a lot of reading. I think all of us would be more than happy to take one and read it. We could still limit it to three minutes. And if there's a way to figure out how many words are normally spoken in three minutes, they could be limited. But I don't want to cut that access off. I don't want to cut that off to the public because I think that, that, you know, we need more people involved in city government. And that's one way to do it. So I would like to hear from other people on the council to see what they think.
Alderman Jessi?
I would concur with Alderman Carper. There's a lot of people that don't want to come out in public right now or are also not very confident in speaking in public and also being taped. So if we have an outlet where someone can type up something, send it into the city with their concerns, I think it's a great idea.
Alderman Carper?
I would concur. With the, we're still in the middle of a first phase of the pandemic. And I think that it's the most prudent thing to do. We've been very good about being safe in regards to, you know, wearing our mask and using social distancing and whatnot. So I absolutely would agree. I would have to also say that it's prudent to limit them to three minutes, which I looked up, is 450 words. So I think that's important as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Alderman Brown Edwards?
I do think that it's important to continue. I believe that the health concerns are something that we've been very careful about here in City Hall. And I think that it has created open dialogue with the community who wants to participate in city government.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Okay, so I'm hearing three minutes resumption of the email, even though we had technical difficulties with it, where some folks were not allowed to address because of those due to some spam settings on the, our third-party provider gives us for technical support.
Are we, do we have that corrected now?
To the best of our knowledge. We believe there are certain word phrases that the, the, and Scott, maybe you would be better to address this than I would, because you're the more of the tech guy than me, because you're 20 years younger than me. Can you explain what happened and whether we've got it corrected or not? We believe it is, but there are certain phrases that tripped the spam. And it sent it directly into a folder that neither, no one in the clerk's office even realized existed. And then when they were attempted to be retrieved, the only thing that was retrievable was the address of the sender, the text, the body of the, the email was not retrievable. And when the city clerk went to make outreach to those folks, one of them turned out to be a bad, I'll use the word term bad, because it went, came back undeliverable, email address. So Alderman Brown Edwards?
Alderman Carper, do you have a time limit that you would like to set on this?
Yeah, it would be the same as what we've always done, three minutes.
No, I'm sorry, for it to expire. Do you want it to be open for all time or just until the health concerns are over?
You know, who knows how long this is going to last. So I, I guess that would be something that could just, once, if we ever get back to normal, we'll probably know and we can say, oh, good, let's shut down the email address.
Thank you.
So, God, who knows?
Indefinitely then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll open the email back up. Or I guess I'm hearing a concurrence here, one, two, three, four, if we were taking a vote, which we can't do at this meeting. So anyone else want to weigh in? Because it would be the, what I'm hearing is the consensus of the council is to reinstate that. Unless I hear an objection, that'll be our plan to open the public comments at cityofmacomb.com email address back up and so that we can start taking those comments. There'll be, the former policy indicated they'd need to be received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. That didn't occur a couple weeks ago. And that the comments will be read by the clerk. I really think it's the best that the clerk, not a member of the council, read those.
Okay. I just thought if that was too much for one person, that, you know, we could simply, she could just hand them out to us. Okay. Because I think I remember the most we had one time was 12.
As long as I can enunciate it right.
Yeah. The most we had was 12. So, you know, if you ever get hoarse during the reading of it, just.
We'll make sure she has water.
I'll bring water.
So three minutes by 3:00 o'clock on the day of the meeting and we'll be having that back up. We'll get ahold of our third-party IT folks and get that up and running.
Thank you all for your input.
Thank you.
All righty. Next on the agenda is Ms. Townsend, again, a local activist, to discuss the March Together We Walk, threats to peaceful process and the city's response. Ms. Townsend, thank you again for joining us tonight.
Thank you, guys. It's actually a really big honor and a goal of mine to actually be up here and speak to you guys. So thank you for that. And I'm also a little nervous, so bear with me.
Don't be nervous. We've all got you here.
I wrote a little something and then afterwards, I am open for questions if that's okay with you guys.
Absolutely.
Okay. Cross burning and other biased crimes have no place in our society. No one should be subject, subjected to this type of vile conduct. This was from the US Attorney, US Attorney Miller. This is from the February 9, 2014 press release after a sentencing of two Macomb men for cross burning on an interracial couple's front lawn. This happened in 2001, the year I started to really see this community. In the beginning of that year, I lost my mother. We lived maybe five or six minutes away. It was 3:00 AM and it still took the ambulance over 20 minutes to get to our home and the housing. I was 14 when I was yelled at by dispatch. She told me that if I continued to call, they would block the number and I would get in trouble for harassing dispatch. After losing her, I had to call the schools to say that we would not be attending that day. Lincoln School was fine with it, but when I called my school, the junior high, the secretary yelled at me and told me I could not call in and that I was coming to school. And as a 14-year-old child, I rebelled and told her, well, my mom just died, bleepity bleep, which wasn't nice, so I apologize, and hung up. Afterwards, she called me back with our principal and our counselor and they were polite and kind. Had they been that way in the beginning, it probably would have fostered more trust and authority for me at that time. My point in all of this is, those of us of color and lower financial stature are treated a certain way in this community. When emergency personnel come into our community, they have a predisposition. We have been asking for at least a month for you all to acknowledge that and to stand with us. Last Monday's meeting was a bit of a shock to me as I was unaware the investigation was done. I was upset with the views shared from some of the, some of the people in this council. Thank you for those who took the time to respond to my email, even if we did not agree on the contents of it. Alderman Cook, you stated you understood how we felt because of action stimulus happening to you. And I'm sorry that you had to experience that. If this is so, why not say anything? Why not speak up and show your solidarity with us? Why not tell people you support us and that you've had those actions and you're not okay with that happening to people in your community? When I spoke of Alderman Brown Edwards being the only one to come at her own free will, allow me to clarify what exactly I meant. She makes herself known. She introduced herself to the community and lets us know she has support for us. She goes around and shakes hands with everybody. And one time, she even brought these Doc Nick stuff and things to put on the crocs of the kids' shoes that were there. She doesn't hide behind a mask or a ball cap. This is what we're being asked. We're being asked for you not to hide behind your words, behind subtle actions, but to stand up and really show that you have support for this community. We're fighting for our rights to be seen and to be treated as equals. We're not dismissing that there are good officers, at least in my point of view. I'm not dismissing that. I know there are. I've been lucky to experience two of them in my lifetime here in Macomb, Officer York and Officer Hamer. They have been exceptionally decent officers and I am very appreciative for them showing a positive light in this community. But we need more than just two, two officers. The march went well. Again, I would like to thank Lieutenant Hamer, Officer Jeff Elmore, and I'm sorry if I mess this up, Officer Troy Shodel. I hope I said your name right.
Shodel.
Thank you, of the MPD. Lori Sutton, Melinda Presswood, Todd Riley, and Anthony Reed from Go West, the Ritz crew for assembling during your off time. Most of all, the members of this community. You came out together and did something to get people to notice. Thank you. We had people yelling at us and to them. I want to say, if it's true to you that all lives matter, then us saying Black Lives Matter should not bother you because we are a life and you should be agreeing with us instead of taunting us and threatening us. I want to also bring up that only two hours away, the same issues are happening in Peoria, Illinois. They're receiving verbal threats, people driving by threatening them, and threats on Facebook. And their police department is taking it seriously. There have been arrests and the people have been spoke to by their police department for those accounts on social media. How are we only two hours away and a smaller community and we aren't sticking up for those of us protesting for rights? We want to make this place a safe place for when WIU opens up and we get more people back into our community. WIU brings a lot to our economy. And if we want that to continue to happen, we need to make it a safe space for everybody and for people's children that come here. I wanted to also thank Pastor Kelly for joining us. It was wonderful to have you. And I wanted to thank the council for hearing me out, both in my email and face-to-face. So if you guys have any questions. Oh, I have one. I'm sorry. Nervous. One more. I actually have, if I could have those, please. I actually have a 30, a $30, 30-day challenge for our aldermen and city council to wear a Black Lives Matter pin for 30 days wherever you go to show your action and support for us. I usually have mine, but I gave it to a woman during the march because I know I can get more. And I'm sure you all have seen people around the community. So can you guys go on record and state whether you are willing to support us by just wearing a simple pin on your clothes when you're out in the community?
Absolutely.
Thank you all so much. I will pass them around.
Feel free to hand those out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Any questions for Ms. Townsend? Alderman Carper?
Just a short one. You got, you got my email?
I did.
Okay. I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Alderman Brown Edwards?
Mr. Mayor, I asked Mrs. Townsend to come speak to us because she originally reached out to me and asked, what was the email address that she can send her, her public comment to? And I told her that that ability had been, I'm sorry, had been discontinued. And she could come and speak in person to us in public comment. And then I contacted her again and said, well, you know, second, on second thought, maybe you want to speak beyond public comment and be on the agenda so you can ask questions and have questions answered. And so that was my suggestion to her. So I appreciate Alderman Carper asking for public comment to be included again because this is the result of Ms. Townsend asking to be, asking to have her email sent to public comment when we weren't able to have it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I would say we were all better informed by having Ms. Townsend here in person, because she's a very articulate speaker.
I agree. Thank you.
Very articulate. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Townsend? All righty. Ms. Townsend, thank you again. Thank you for sharing the pens.
I'm sorry, I did have one.
Okay, Alderman Brown Edwards?
Yes. Mrs. Townsend, can you tell us your experience with the police department as far as providing any resources that you had asked for?
So because we haven't had a great outpour of any action happening when police have been contacted for the protest, I have started documenting. My place of employment documentation is huge and I've been there for 14 years. So while I'm also set up in the back doing, signing people So, while I'm also set up in the back doing, signing people up for registered to vote and to complete their sentences, I also keep track of that. So, when we see somebody go by, the only people's jobs on the sidewalk is to get a license plate. I write down the color, the make, the model, what the person looked like, and the time. And I also informed the officer that came last Wednesday that I was doing that, so that way, they have absolutely no way to be like, "Well, we couldn't figure out who this vehicle belonged to," or "We couldn't find this person." You have as much information as we can possibly give you, other than stopping them and trapping them right there in front of us.
And can you explain your experience with MPD for the march?
Well, it wasn't MPD at all. It was Lieutenant Hamer. He was amazing. He and I sat down at my home, and we discussed the route. We talked about all different options. We actually started gabbing too much that he had to get to going. We talked about the police force here in Macomb, and how there are good officers, and to those officers, thank you for being who you are, and as much as it may seem rough, please do stand up. Your fellow coworkers may not support you, but you have a large community that will, and we will back you 100%. So, stand up and do what's right, because the people who you're doing your job for, we care about that, and we appreciate you.
Okay, Alderman Brown Edwards. Are you done? All right, thanks. Ms. Carper, did you have anything?
Yes, I was just wondering if you could clarify for me, because I spend time on social media, and there's a number of different sites, and I need to know the correct one, because there's Justice Coalition, there's Black Lives Matters, there's six or seven different sites.
Well, it depends on what you're looking for.
Okay. Could you provide us a little insight into those, please?
Okay, so we have, also while you have your time, I wanted to also give a thank you, which I forgot, because I was trying to rush, I was nervous, to the Democratic Women of McDonough County. They have literally answered all of my questions that I've had. They've been very supportive, they've listened, they even volunteered and did water stations throughout our march to make sure the protesters had something to drink. So, thank you to them. So, we have the Black Lives Matter Macomb, which is just the simple protest. All it is, which it was started by Ms. Kaylee Shelton... There's two of those now. See, I didn't even know.
So, there's the Black Lives Matter Macomb Group, which is, it has some conversations that we have in there, articles that are shared, and then there's a Black Lives Matter Macomb page that will strictly just have when protests are. No public conversation, just dates and times. Those are the two protest pages.
Thank you.
And those are for strictly just that, just protest, and those are grassroots. They're started by Macomb residents, like we've talked about before, how the protest was started, it was started by Kaylee and her son going out to make a difference. There's also the Democratic Women of McDonough County Social Justice, which that is a place where those of us in the community who are of color, who have felt discriminated against, can go to and be like, "Hey, I had this case happen to me. I don't trust the authority in Macomb to actually listen to me and take me seriously. Can I have a white ally help me? Can I have a white ally help me fill out a form, a complaint form? Go over this traumatic experience with me?" Because for some people, especially those who have experienced a lot of police coming into their environment in a negative way, having the police called is a traumatic experience. It makes them shut down, makes them nervous and able to feel safe. So, they have this support system to talk. So, when you're hearing things from Ms. McEgan, and it is third-party, it's because those people don't feel safe enough to come up here and be like, "Hey, this happened to me." Because either they feel like there will be a witch hunt after them, or it's re-traumatizing, or it's just an unsafe situation, and these people give those community members a safe situation and people to feel like they can rely on. And I also wanted to say, when it comes to those women and that subject, or Ms. McEgan, I understand we all have our views. I've talked to Ms. McEgan about it. I'm very loving and kind, and I was like, "Whew, honey, I don't know if I can do all that like you do." And she explained it to me, we had a great talk. Everybody protests in their own way. Everybody speaks up in their own way, and that is her way. And what I learned from my job at Mosaic of almost 14 years, is how you come into a situation is how the day is affected. When she comes up here, if you're already rolling your eyes, or "Here we go with this again," you're showing people in the community, "We don't have to take this woman seriously. We don't have to take this situation seriously. Look at the people who are in power, they're already tired of hearing it." And I know I've seen it, when I've watched these, and it makes me infuriated, because if you won't listen to her, how are you going to listen to me? And I'm just getting started in this activism stuff. So, just be aware of that the next time you guys hear something from her, or anybody from that organization.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, and you're absolutely correct. The way that we respond is the way. But I think that we've also been put on the defensive here at the council, because there's been a lot of finger pointing, there've been a lot of allegations pointed towards us, and we've been generalized in a number of ways that haven't absolutely been fair. So, I think that everyone who sits here very much is open-minded and wants to hear about these things. You know, we're talking about these things, we aren't ignoring, but we also, personally, I've been insulted, and so that's hard to take as well. So, I don't want to discount, I'm not trying to discount you, and don't take me wrong or anything, and beat me up on social media, but I'm listening to you, but it's hard sometimes, because sometimes, not everybody is nice. Your presentation is very kind, and I appreciate your time this evening.
That same sentiment you have is honestly how I felt all day by coming here. I struggle with anxiety and severe depression. I haven't left my house at all today, because I've had some mixed anxiety about coming up here and talking to you. I'm so glad your face is right here, because I probably would have had a panic attack, because I had no idea if you guys were going to take me seriously, if I was going to have to argue with anybody up here, or if I was going to have to fight for you guys to actually hear from somebody from the community that this is going on. Because when a woman who actually sat down and listened to me and told me, "Hey, it's okay that you're afraid. It's okay that you feel like this, this is normal. Take time to breathe, I'll take care of this," is up here doing this hard work, and you guys are dismissing her, it gives me absolutely no hope to come up here and speak to this council, because how would I do that? I understand that things can be abrasive, but sometimes, we need people to be abrasive for change to happen. And those people get the flack, but they're later remembered as the great people and great part of history.
Well, you've done a fantastic job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Ms. Brown Edwards.
Ms. Townsend, I wanted to thank you for your march. My husband and I were at your march on Friday. He was in the caravan, and I was walking, and it was very well put together, and MPD really directed traffic and blocked off streets and the highway, and they did a fantastic job. And I, unfortunately, it was postponed from your earlier date, but that might have been a good thing, because it seemed like there was a lot more support and outpour of support. I even saw on social media that there was a lot of people supporting, so I appreciate you doing that. And I do know, I mean, you've expressed to me that you was going to have some anxiety about coming up here, and you've been planning since Thursday, and even today, you sent me a message saying, "I'm afraid I won't get beat up when I come here." So, I don't want any resident to ever feel that this is a place of adversarial, an adversarial situation will happen here, that people should be afraid to come to us. I don't want anybody to ever be anxiety ridden. I'm glad we are opening up the public comment email, because of those concerns, it's scary to come up here, especially when you've seen in past weeks that, you know, it can be a little heated. So, I appreciate you fighting through your anxiety and being able to come and speak with us today. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to add, the last vehicle that yelled at our protesters, it was a construction company who has a very, very recent history in Peoria, Illinois. They started by just driving by and yelling at protesters, and they ran over protesters. It escalated from just yelling to running people over. It's become such an issue that they are about to lose their contract with Nestle. Huh? It was Jacksonville? Okay, well, that's closer, that doesn't make it even better. It was in Jacksonville. Kaylee did call the company and tried to speak to them after it happened. She got two rude responses, and they hung up on her, and she spoke with Lieutenant Hamer about it, and hopefully, that will be handled, and we can start taking this seriously, because I would hate for something to happen to somebody in this community when we've been telling and telling and telling, "Hey, it's a possibility that this will escalate. Hey, this is possibly, this is going to happen." Thank you.
Chief, you had that information regarding that specific field, is that correct?
I can't remember whether it was in Jacksonville. We'll all have to use more and look into that and see if that company is responsible for whatever they're referring to.
Okay, all right. Ms. Townsend, thank you for coming tonight. I want to, and hearing your story is telling, so thank you very much, and I apologize for what you endured, some very unfavorable response when your mother died. So, I'm sincerely sorry for that for you. Alrighty. Ms. McEgan.
I do want to point out that some of the worst of the people who've been harassing them, and more than once, like that construction company, they are people who are clearly from out of town, but see an opportunity to terrorize some people. That should infuriate every one of us in this community. That particular outfit has been seen at other places, too, so we got people tracking that, but clearly, they see no problem with just driving into people, and so that should be taken seriously. And I'm going to point out one thing to you...
That information was passed on to the police, is that right, Ms. Townsend?
Yes, from Kaylee Shelton.
Okay, great, thank you. All right.
One thing I want to point out to you, just because you made a racist microaggression or a trope, that I need to point out, because this happens to our black women a lot here. You labeled her, Celeste, as very articulate, and we white people do that, and we think that we're actually, you know, giving people a compliment, but that's actually part of racial implicit bias, that assumes that they're not going to be. And so, it's received very differently by many of our black members, as being, "What other way would they expect me to be?" And I'm not saying that to be mean, because I have made, I've made every one of these mistakes myself. It takes a long time to learn. And I will say, I am incredibly grateful that so many of our black members and our friends have been gentle enough and kind enough to tell me when I'm doing wrong. If I'm misrepresenting them, they do tell me. If they feel like I'm misrepresenting them, they will let you all know. So, for people to say that I'm not speaking on their behalf, well, you know, our organization is very, we try to have a big conversation. Nothing gets read up here that hasn't gone through all of our members. So, and, we let our black members lead on everything racial justice, and if they say no to something, we don't discuss it further as white people. If they say no, their experience is more valid, and they are at risk in ways that I am not. So, but one of the things we do as white people, as white people, we try to be good white allies, and knowing that our members, when they leave here, they're at much greater risk of being targeted in the community, of being followed in their vehicles, being run off the road, having people yell hateful things at their children, and that's why some of us white people decided to be their voice to speak about it to you, in the hopes of bridging that gap of fear. And there needs to be an opportunity for that to be able to happen. I hope someday that all of our black community members feel safe and are actually safe, and can come up and speak their truth in a way that informs this community and teaches us all about our broader humanity and our obligations to each other. We're not there yet, but let's keep talking and hopefully, try to get there. And we can all have issue... Go ahead.
Is that all right?
Hold on, Ms. McEgan.
Yeah.
Thanks. Did you have anything else?
I just want to thank you, Heather, for coming. You have a strong presence in social justice and on social media. I appreciate seeing you in person. I appreciate honest conversations. So, Celeste told us a few of the social medias that she is behind. Can you, you know, clear up some things, too, about what social media sites that you are behind, so we can continue with this honest conversation?
Yes, anything that says Democratic Women of McDonough County in front of it, that is our teams.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you said honest conversation. To be clear, everything that we have put out as complaints or affidavits or whatever, we filed with the Illinois Attorney General first. We didn't put out an honest one.
We haven't found that, to be, and I also have to ask, many of these allegations...
Connect it there, whether or not they dismissed it, is up to them, because we don't hear further.
Okay, I understand that. Many allegations that are brought to us, when we do ask questions after the meetings, and we ask Chief Barker, "Have you heard about that? Has Heather walked anybody into the police department?" And we hear that that is not the case. Can you explain, can you explain that to us, please?
I will be happy to. So, as a white ally, one of the first things that we try to do is establish safety. If people do not feel safe going to the police with their complaint, then we try to help them feel safe enough to explain what the issue is, and then we try to establish a connection to social services in the community, and then connect them to some friends and other white allies, so that then, as they begin to process whatever the issue is, we can hopefully begin to build a community around them of people who already deal with these things. However, we have taken actual complaints from people alleging that when they tried to file complaints, they were retaliated on by the chief, by the assistant chief, and several officers showed up at their house threatening them. Or, when they tell me that they do not feel safe, and this is why, it is not my position to try to force people who feel unsafe already, and knowing that we have credible allegations sitting in the Illinois Attorney General's office, already alleging that people have been retaliated against, and we do have some credible evidence.
When you talk about that, the people that are fearful for retaliation or have been retaliated against, can you give, like, is that one person? Not that one is too many, but I just want to understand.
These are patterns.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so at least three people disconnected is when we think that we're seeing a pattern. Three people who don't necessarily know each other at different points in time, unrelated to each other, unrelated to that.
Are these people all of color? Are they all of color?
So, I'm not going to reveal the details of the complainants, that is, you know, for the Illinois Attorney General.
I understand that, and I appreciate confidentiality. But so many harsh allegations have been made towards our police department, I just want to be sure of what we are hearing, you know, that, is it, because the allegations are about race, and so that's why I'm asking that question.
But we also have helped white people as well, alleging some very serious misconduct on behalf of the police.
Okay, so when you assist someone, I'm trying to, I try to piece this up, okay? So, you assist someone, and you connect them to their social services, because they have been discriminated against because of whatever reason from the police department?
Because they believe that something has happened to them.
Okay, and so you connect them to the social services, which is fantastic. But then, but then there's these allegations brought against the police department, and that's what I'm trying to understand. So, they go to social services, but the police aren't made aware about it until it comes up in social media or in this arena. Can you help me with that? I'm trying to understand all of this, Heather.
Yes, so, our organization is not going to make complaints based on their half by signing an affidavit, when they do not feel safe from retaliation, clearly, right?
Okay.
Now, we tell them what their options are. They are always given the option, and the option of having a white ally go with them to the police department and fill out a complaint. They do not wish to. If they do wish, however, to fill out a complaint to a different body outside of here, they are put in contact with, where it's appropriate, the Department of Justice, or the Illinois Attorney General, or the Department of Human Rights, ACLU, ACLU of Illinois, and then they decide what route they want to go. And then, we help them fill out the paperwork for that, and after that, it's out of our hands. And to be clear, they're only asking for an investigation in every one of those. They are not asking for anything specific. However, when we first met with Alderwoman Carper and Mayor Inman last year, back in either December or November, we had a very reasonable list of things that we felt were reasonable, everyday fixes, such as, some departments allow any person to submit a complaint to any public official about their police, even if it's not official, just to put it on your radar as watchdogs, to say, "You know, maybe that's a one-off, maybe they were tired or whatever, and that's fine." But if you keep hearing the same thing over and over again about somebody, and they say, "No, no, I'm not going to put a complaint in," that's... And I will also state that, we have had, we also pull evidence, so we get friends' help with FOIA's, we look at police reports, we look at pictures, we try to see what matches up. And when we've gone public, it's because we felt that there were patterns occurring that we couldn't help anybody with, but that the community needed to start seeing and being aware of, because there are certain patterns of misconduct that are never okay. It is never okay to deny somebody with mental health needs the ability to have an ambulance if, and be, have a proper medical assessment. The police should not be ever denying black parents an ambulance called for their black children having a mental health crisis. It shouldn't, they shouldn't ever be told, "We're taking, either you're putting your kid in the back of our police car, or else you're not getting any help from us." And yet we have several complaints of that. Another pattern that we have is black children, underage minor children, being approached to be snitches by some of our police. That should never be happening, and it's causing a lot of young black people to get put in harm's way. And I say this fully willing to testify that these are actually my beliefs in court. We have taken dozens and dozens and dozens of complaints. We've held affidavit workshops. We've burned, I've burned weeks of vacation over the last two years to do this work. And the fact that you're not hearing about this, I will tell you, is because I understand why, because you're white like me. I really thought McComb was experienced the same way for everybody. It didn't occur to me that some people experience it and are treated very differently. Now, last year, I became the sole advisor, well, the advisor, I should say, at WIU for two black student orgs, because not a single white faculty member, now that black faculty members were around anymore, but all the, all the white faculty members would not help them, and they were going to go defunct. And Tammy Lee is the co on one of those for her sorority, and she could confirm, we can't take them to anything. I take them to volunteer, they get mistreated at every single venue, every single place.
Every single venue?
Every single venue.
Because I just have learned along the way, you can't use the word always and every and never, so I honestly...
Every venue we've taken them to, they have had some people make unknowingly racist microaggressions or tropes, talking about...
Well, that's another thing, and I'll stop, there's other things to talk about on the agenda.
No, I get it.
Again, I appreciate your time here, Heather.
I do, and thank you so much. I hope this can, and again, we know that that's done accidentally. We're not doing it on purpose.
So help us do better, okay? And teach us, and they'll put us down when we try to do better. Okay?
Well, again, public officials, I'm a volunteer. We need public, white public officials to seek out that stuff.
And I'm, and I'm trying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? All righty. We'll move on to item number two, discussion on the resolution extending, extending the resolution concerning the Mural Emergency Proclamation declaring a civil emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which was issued originally on April 16, 2020, which will expire at 11:59 PM on August 17, 2020. Ms. Gelf, do you want to give us an overview of where we're at here, please?
Yes, as you mentioned, currently set to expire August 17. Last time we extended it about 60 days. We fully anticipate that the governor will extend the state disaster declaration, so I would be suggesting another 60-day extension. Think it works best when it corresponds with an actual council meeting, so that would be October 5, which would be 57 days. October 19 would be 70 days. We currently have some temporary orders in place that are issued as a result of the emergency proclamation that benefit our local businesses, and it's anticipated that any potential FEMA money would be tied to having that plaque, or emergency declaration in place. So we would be suggesting that it be extended again. Sorry, Alderman, I'm like, forgetting to turn far enough to see you.
Any questions, any discussion? Alderman Brown Edwards.
Would you explain fully what this would entail, just to refresh people's memories?
So we would be extending the original emergency proclamation that was issued back in April. Let me get to my documents, sorry. And pursuant to that emergency declaration, it enables the mayor to do certain things by mayor order that would not require approval of the council. So what we've done currently in place primarily revolve around allowing our businesses to operate the outdoor seating in the public right-of-way. We allowed some abatement of parking spaces to facilitate that, and those are tied to the current restriction on operations and how many people can be inside the building and those types of things. So those orders are currently tied to extending until those restrictions would be lifted and would be back to 100% capacity. I don't think any of us anticipate that happening anytime soon. It also extended some of the rights of current liquor license holders that they wouldn't traditionally have. And those rights correlate with what's allowed by the Illinois Liquor Commission. We haven't done anything beyond the state.
Thank you.
Alderman Carper.
She covered it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All righty, so we place this on for action then for next Monday night, considering that it will expire shortly after our meeting next Monday.
Correct. So I guess I would like some feedback on the, on the date.
Oh.
I mean, I can put that in the night of, but it'd be nice to have that in there.
What did you say 60 days would be?
Well, 57 days is the October 5 meeting. If we extended the October...
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. The October 19 would be 70 days.
The original one, order was about 90.
I really would recommend to go further out, 60 or 90 days.
Unless it's an extreme extra load on your, on your daily workload, Mayor?
No, no, ma'am.
So it sounds like it's only been used a couple of times, right?
Correct.
So you wouldn't expect any more changes beyond what you've already put in place?
It's possible, depending on the extent, I'm going to give you some updated cases today, so, and they're not going the right direction, so.
Right.
There's a possibility that we may envision some other orders that may have to happen.
Ms. Gelf, is there any statutory or other regulation limit maximum on how many days we can do it for?
No, because we're not, we're not, I mean, we're extending the emergency, but you, the council had adopted that by, excuse me, resolution. So it's kind of mixing words a little bit. We're not extending the emergency like the governor has done, we're extending your resolution that adopted the emergency proclamation.
There isn't a maximum number of days we can extend for?
90 would put it in the realm of November 16.
And I would also follow up, you could also terminate it early.
Yeah.
By council action as well.
Oh. I would go for the 90-day recommendation, so.
I would recommend 90 also.
Okay, so November 16, Alderman Brown Edwards.
I thought originally the 90 days was too long, and I think that October 5 is reasonable because we could do the same thing we're doing now and extend it out. I mean, we're kind of all here every Monday to be asked to change that.
What's the council's pleasure?
I'm good with 90 days.
I would say 90 days because if we need to end it early, we can always terminate it early. So if something happens, then we have a decline in cases.
Alderman, I would agree with Alderman Edwards, just, I think the more often we review it, the better we are. Well, we'll put a date on there for Monday night.
Eighty days.
I would say maybe I'll find a date in between and see what the council's pleasure is next week.
I'll vote for whatever, it's fine.
Thank you.
All righty, you can stay there, Lisa, if that's all right. Item number three, discussion on ordinance to amend Chapter 7, Article 10 of the Municipal Code of the City regarding residential swimming pools. This had discussion last Monday night. Any further discussion this evening? Alderman Moon.
Have you had any feedback from pool owners or anyone on this?
I have not, and I haven't heard anything from Mr. Bannon either.
Any other discussion? Alderman Moon, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. That'll be placed on the agenda for second reading and final action next Monday night. An update on the complete count census. So Mr. Bannon is enjoying a much deserved vacation, so a couple of things to report there. The CDC, excuse me, jumping ahead one, sorry. There was a group of volunteers that were here in City Hall last week stuffing about 400 bags of census swag, we'll say. So some updated face masks, some other small bottles of hand sanitizer, all purchased with census information printed on them, reminders. Those will be, anticipated to be given out to WIU students as they return for fall semester. So we want to thank those volunteers from the Complete Count Census Committee that helped put those bags together last Friday here in City Hall. And then we're also being informed by the Census Bureau that, again, starting as early as this week, there'll be enumerators in the communities throughout the country. We've not been given a specific timeframe for when enumerators will be here, but it would be anticipated they could be starting as early as this week. With the new date of terminating all counting, including online reporting, as September 30. We had had some discussion about that being October 31. The Census Bureau has set that September 30 now as the date for all data to be completed and submitted for final tabulation. So again, to the extent that we have any input with the local enumerators, we'll, going to be asking them to wait for a couple of weeks to show up in our neighborhoods, particularly the northwest quadrant, where we would anticipate interacting with students as they return in off-campus housing. Any questions about the complete count census? Okay. Do also want to remind, kind of along the same lines, COVID, census, outreach. So the state of Illinois announced about a week and a half ago, 10 days ago, an emergency rental assistance program through the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and we would encourage, anyone in the communities had a certain significant impact from COVID-19 and their inability to pay rent. We would suggest and encourage folks to go to the program's website. It is fully individually activated. There is no community organization here shepherding this project. That's not uncommon across the state. But era.ihda.org, that's e-r-a dot i-h-d-a dot org, is the, all the application information is there, and I would strongly suggest, WIRC strongly suggests, other community partners suggest, that anyone interested would assess their eligibility for the program initially, and so that they're not putting themselves in a situation where they may not even be eligible for the assistance, and having gone through the application process, find out that they were not eligible. So go through the application process and initiate it by determining eligibility. A couple of things here, the portal for this opened today and will continue through August 21st. We are designated a disproportionately impacted area by the Illinois Housing Development Authority. That, I think, carries some extra weight in those folks that may be applying for this type of assistance. The simple submission of the application is no guarantee of assistance, and it's checking with all of our sources here. This is a completely random program that individuals must first access themselves, and landlord participation is required. So again, era.ihda.org, this information will be on the city's website in the morning for collaboration with your landlord, determine eligibility though first. They're looking to incentivize and help out about 30,000 tenants in Illinois. So time is of the essence. Alderman Carper.
Just to comment on that, I, as a, as a former landlord, I got an email today from Community Development.
Right.
Forming people of the program. So they're doing a great job getting the information out.
That's exactly what we've chosen to do today. The Community Development Office sent an email along with this PowerPoint to all registered landlords in the city. That was our suggestion to abide and all-in, go all-in. And just quickly, as of this afternoon, the, excuse me, the McDonough County Health Department reported an additional six cases of confirmed COVID-19 in McDonough County. The current case, active cases is 21. And again, would remind everyone that that's not where we want to be, this close to the resumption of classes at the K through 12 programs in the county specifically, and then as well as the return of students to the campus here at Western Illinois University. I would encourage everyone to utilize face coverings, social distancing, and hand washing and all their efforts, and we will endeavor to do a better job of doing that and getting that message out. So don't believe there's anything else to come before you this evening. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.